Wednesday, October 16th, 2019. This meeting is being broadcast live. A recording of this meeting will be aired in the town's information channel, 1301, several times during the week, and it will also be available on the town's website. I'm Frank Berry, the Vice Chairman of the Town of Election and Planning Commission. Other planning commissions present are...
Good morning, Sam Andrews.
Good morning, Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning, Roscoe Kaufman.
Good morning, Jamie Michaels.
And good morning, Chris Brownlee.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Stuart Ford, Assistant Mayor.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Manas, Town Council.
Good morning, I'm Brad Cunningham, Town Attorney.
Good morning, I'm Ronald Williams, Town Council.
Good morning, Dan Walker, Director of Parks and Town.
Good morning, Charlie Thompson, Commissioner.
Good morning, John Hanson, Director of Plan.
I'm Katherine Lawren, Assistant County Commissioner.
Good morning, Randy Anderson, Assistant District Commissioner.
I think all of you have done fine.
And I'm Karen Hannah, the Assistant Minister for Parks.
At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Jeanne if she would give us invocation.
Okay, let's pray. God, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting today. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying a character. We pray these things in your mighty name, amen.
Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll call the meeting to order. You all have your packets. Is there any deletions to the agenda? All right. Next order of business is approval of the minutes you have before you. Do I have any corrections, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved in second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Public presentations, we have none. Old business, we have none. Move right into new business. John, the approval and recommendation to adopt a new development impact fee.
In March, Town Council adopted a resolution directing you all to begin preparing the required studies and the ordinance needed for the town to implement a development impact fee. For the town to do this, the commission must recommend approval of four items. These items are the development impact fee study, a housing affordability study, a capital improvements plan, and a development impact fee ordinance. We've prepared a short presentation, excuse me, PowerPoint presentation to kind of go through those four items. At the conclusion of the presentation, we'll ask for the commission to formally recommend approval of the impact fee package that includes all four of these items. As I said, on March 4th, Town Council passed a resolution that requested you all begin the study preparations for a development impact fee. The development impact fee study provides the maximum allowable impact fees. We've also, as I said, prepared the housing affordability study, capital improvements plan, the ordinance, and today, we're at the final step for your, asking for your recommendations. Development impact fee is a, represents a financial payment made to a local government by a developer to fund certain off-site capital improvements necessary to accommodate future growth. It is, legality for collecting impact fees is expressed in the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Ordinance Act. So, the first part is the study. The study report is a report that documents existing conditions, anticipates future year needs and their implementation costs, and recommends maximum allowable fees. In this case, we have, the report addresses parks and recreation, municipal facilities and equipment, and transportation. The law allows you to separate into different zones, or to collect impact fees from a certain area to be applied to that certain area. In this case, we use the entire town as our zone. Some of the data that was used in the study are the U.S. Census Longitudinal Employer Household Dynamic Data, Census Bureau American Community Survey, and the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation, 9th Edition. We understand since we started this, there's actually a 10th edition now, so the plan will be updated before final adoption, but we don't expect to be a lot of difference in the trip generation data. For parks and recreation, we looked at, the service unit that we looked at is population. For municipal facilities, it's population and employment. And for transportation, you look at the number of vehicle trips. Parks and recreation, the major components are the replacement value of all the parks that the town currently owns and operates. Then you also have to throw in other available funding sources. If you get some grants and whatnot, that has to be included in the calculations. And then a total replacement cost, which in this case was $9.9 million. So, you calculate that to come up with a cost per capita, and your maximum allowable parks and recreation fee was $483.32. That's per person, not per house. Under the municipal facilities, you use a consumption-driven methodology. The major components of this are the replacement value of your facilities, other, again, other available funding sources. In this case, the MRAP that we had would be included, was included in that, in the value of that, so that was $733,000 value, so you take that out. Your total replacement cost of your facilities, you end up coming up with a cost per capita of $81.39 for the municipal facilities. And then the transportation fee, major components for this one were traffic volumes, maximum service capacity. They did a facility link analysis, the impacts of anticipated growth, credits and offsets, and then recommended road projects. The maximum allowable fee for the transportation was $87.70 per trip. Once you come up with that number, you have to do, the law requires you do a housing affordability analysis, and that's to ensure that the proposed maximum fees that, the maximum fees that are being proposed are not such that you're making housing unaffordable for people to purchase in the town. The conclusion of the report is that the additional costs to homeowners or renters in the Town of Lexington caused by the proposed development impact fees are not large enough to exceed cost-burden criteria established by HUD. Bottom line is, from the report, we pulled out some examples for this slide. A single-family home would, for every new single-family home, it would be a total of $2,329 impact fee added to the cost of the home. $1,285 of that would go to parks, $216 would go to municipal, I'm sorry, and then $828 would go to transportation. That money has to be dedicated to specific projects in those specific areas that are listed in your, in the capital improvements plan. Other examples that I've got are the maximum fee for, for example, a 3,000-square-foot restaurant would be $13,731. Commercial does not pay impact fee for parks and recreation, so that is just municipal and transportation. And then another example we came up, we did, was a 100-room hotel, which the impact fee for that would be $77,900. The law allows you to include a discount rate. A discount rate applies to maximum allowable impact fees to provide a reasonable fee for continued residential investment and to ensure that impact fees collected do not exceed the cost of providing capital facilities to support new development. We discussed this in the work session last night. I think everybody was generally in favor of not applying a discount fee at this point. And then, of course, the final piece is the development impact ordinance. That's where you would make a recommendation on a discount rate if you chose to do so. And then, the capital improvements plan. This is a part of the, of the package that has to be included. It's a blueprint for what we're going to do with the money that's collected for the It provides the projects that are eligible, the project description, a start and completion date anticipated, revenue and expenditure summary, and funding sources and a schedule. That can be updated at any time. The law requires that the entire package be updated at least every five years, but you can, you can update the CIP as we get projects done. We can, we can update that. The, the plan that's in front of you, the CIP that's in front of you, has recommendations for parks and recreation, Virginia Hilton Park expansion and renovation, the construction of a pavilion at the Ice House Amphitheater, and the Old Mill Pond Park. Transportation, which is, always seems to be the most important, projects are an intersection improvement at Old Cherokee and Sunset, an intersection improvement at Whiteford Way and Sunset, and an intersection improvement of Gibson Road, US 1 and 378. And then, some of the municipal facilities that are listed on that CIP are Clark House renovation and parking. We have this building on the other side of Town Hall that needs to be renovated so it can be utilized, a new signal shop for our transportation department, covered storage out at our utilities building, and a new parks building headquarters. So, we're down to the next steps, which are requests for you all to make a recommendation to Town Council to adopt the package. And then, once Town Council has it, we will have a public hearing to take public comments on it. Any questions? We beat this around pretty good last night, too.
Yeah, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on this last night. I think everybody left pretty comfortable with. This is definitely the direction we need to move into.
Might make a motion?
Do you have, is this for us, or do we open it up for comments at this time?
A public hearing will be held on the final reading by Town Council, so it's not necessary for you all to take public comments on it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion?
Chairman's not here, but Vice Chairman.
Vice Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, recommend that Town Council adopt the Town of Election Development Impact Fee Study, Housing Affordability Study, Capital Improvements Plan, and the Development Impact Fee Ordinance.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? It is unanimous. Again, we had over an hour-long discussion on this last night. We felt like this was the best way to try to help get the town, traffic running through the town smoother, quicker. Nobody likes fees, but at some point, you've got to make a tough decision. And that was our job last night, through this process. All right, next item on the agenda is the sketch plan approval for Town Home Subdivision located at the 100th block of Parker Street.
Mr. Kevin Steelman is requesting sketch plan approval for a Town Home project being planned on two parcels located in the 100, in the 100th block of Parker Street. Project will have 100 lots on 12 and 1/2 acres. Commission reviewed this project in July and requested additional information and enhancements to the plan. The items we discussed in July, and I gave you a copy of the plan that you all looked at in July, too, so, were to identify parking specifically for each unit with the number of bedrooms for that unit. I also added the minutes for your reading pleasure from July. Indicate areas where parking restrictions would be in place to allow police enforcement. Provide more specifics on green space showing the location of the dog park and what is not counted in the total green space. Show a connection or multiple connections to do to the planned Old Mill Pond walking trail. Work with staff to determine the visibility of the pump station. Provide a traffic impact study and a plan for road improvements. Indicate the actual road widths for each road. The allowable density for residential development is determined by the classification of the street providing access to the property. Parker Street is classified as a local road, which allows eight units per acre, and this project has eight units per acre. Properties with PR2 zoning do not have a minimum lot size, as long as the homes can meet the setbacks and driveway requirements. I think that's where the discussion about identifying parking specifically for each unit with the number of bedrooms for that unit came from. Project meets the setback requirements with 20-foot front and rear setbacks, as well as five-foot setbacks between each multi-unit building. According to the submitted plan, adequate driveway parking is provided for each unit only if the garages are included and if the number of bedrooms are limited. In July, Mr. Steelman stated that the builder could build two-bedroom units, build additional garage space, or seek a variance to address this concern. The obtained plan does not identify the specific off-street parking available or the number of bedrooms planned for each unit. There are 54 unassigned overflow parking spaces scattered throughout the subdivision. The town's land development ordinance requires at least 20% of the area to be dedicated open space, with at least 50% of the open space being active recreation space. Project is required to have 2 and 1/2 acres of open space with at least an acre and a quarter of active open space. It's proposed to have 4.4 acres of open space with 1.5 acres of active open space. Active open space includes an open field, a picnic pavilion, and four pickleball courts. No information has been provided on the specific area or areas that are included in the space calculations, which is what we discussed. Plan shows sidewalks on both sides of the street, and space is reserved for the town to install the Mill Pond walking trail through the project area. There is no direct connection shown on the plan between the subdivision sidewalks and the Mill Pond walking trail. Access to the development will be obtained through a single entrance on Parker Street. They, as requested, the plan does show the actual road widths of the internal roads, and a traffic impact study has been provided, that Randy can speak more intelligently. Either Randy or Mr. Steelman here to answer any questions.
First of all, Mr. Chairman. Question, Mr. Hanson. Listening to your information here, you discussed a couple places that things were not done. Of the seven items suggested at the last meeting, how many of these items were completed?
Two and 1/2?
I know when looking at the plan, I have them both here in front of me, I don't see a significant change from one to the other, from the items we discussed last time. Unless, Kevin, if you want to speak to that, or why, why these things wasn't noted on the plan, because if we got a proof of sketch plan, it's got to be on there.
Yeah, I understand. A couple of the items, the biggest issue that we had at the last meeting really related to two things. One was traffic. At that time, we didn't have a traffic impact study. We did engage one of our traffic engineers here, and I guess Randy can also speak to his review of the transportation impact, or the, yeah, the traffic, transportation impact assessment, and then how we were dealing with parking. And so, we went through the plan and identified all of the areas where on-street parking would be permitted and it would be prohibited everywhere else, other than in the designated parking areas on the street. There are two of the streets where we have parallel spaces that we provided, where we had alley-loaded units where you could park on the street. In front of the units, we designated one side of the street where we've actually made the pavement section wider, and we provided the pavement detail, which is what you asked for, on roadway widths. And then, on the individual units, we're not the builder, so we don't know how many bedrooms will be in any particular unit, but we very well know what your ordinance is, and if we have a two-bedroom unit, we have to provide two parking spaces. If we have three, we've got to provide three. We know that the alley units, which are, I think it's 52 out of 100, all have four parking spaces. So, regardless of the number of bedrooms there are, we've met your parking requirements. They have a two-car garage and two parking spaces served from the alley. On all the front-loaded units, we have provided specifically enough room for a minimum of two spaces, but they can accommodate three spaces by just widening, widening the pavement section on the driveway. But, again, until we know, the builder plans to offer both two- and three-bedroom units, but we don't know what that mix is, and so until you know what each individual unit is, there's just simply no way to show how many parking spaces, A, are required and B, are being provided. We know that there's room to comply with the ordinance on every lot, based on the way we've set the buildings back.
You said that these are parallel parking on the alley, or on the...
No, ma'am. On the, if you look at the road, and my eyes are so bad, I can't see what those roads are named. I don't remember the road A, road B, but the main roads that are running parallel to Parker Street, we've, we show there the parallel parking spaces on one side of the street, where we've actually widened the pavement section. So, you've got your standard two lanes of travel, and then an additional paved area for parking that's kind of outside of the travel lane. The alleys would have two parking spaces in the rear from the alley. So, you have a rear-loaded garage, two-car garage. All of the alley product, we know from talking to the builder, that every alley-loaded unit has a two-car garage and two parking spaces. So, four spaces total. On the front load, they've either got to do all two-bedroom, which if they do, then we clearly demonstrated all the parking, one in the garage and one in the driveway. And if they do a three-bedroom unit, then they have to either widen the pavement section and set the house farther back. There are some lots where you can accommodate tandem parking in the driveway without having to widen the driveway space. And then, the other issue that we discussed last time was the need for the active open space. We had shown previously just the village green area, and we've just added the pickleball courts, which are, you know, it's a sport that's booming with popularity, especially in, you know, 50, age 50 and up, and for some reason, millennials enjoy it. I don't know why the gap in between, but it's, it's a very popular sport. Doesn't take up a whole lot of land, and, you know, it's just, will just be a good amenity.
There's no extra parking for that?
Yeah, we've got parking all the way around that cul-de-sac. It's kind of hard to see the way that the, the site plan is shaded. They shaded the common areas, kind of a grayscale, but there's parking, perpendicular parking all the way around that cul-de-sac. So, I think there's maybe 15 or 16 spaces that we provided there, and that's, that was a modification to the plan since we met last. We added that active open space. And then, we do have planned, I don't know why it's not shown on here, two connections to your path. One there between the picnic pavilion and the pickleball, there's, there's a sidewalk that would lead from that, where that cul-de-sac is, down to the town's path. And then, the last row of Town Home units that will be facing the Mill Pond will have a wide sidewalk in front of it, and I guess that would be the western end. We would, that sidewalk would connect down to the town's trail there as well. So, we would propose to provide two connections to that. And then, you know, we're also providing the land for the town's trail.
And why was it not shown on the revised plan?
I don't know why it's not on there, but, you know, we discussed it should have been on there, but it'd be very simple to add. I mean, it's, we're proposing two, two connections.
This body, when we approve, when we get a sketch plan, this is what goes on record is what we are approving.
Well, I know that you can also add conditions to it that, you know...
We prefer not to, because they get left off a lot of times, and we, they go back and forth with staff, and it's, we don't like to put staff in that position.
Yeah, I understand. Again, I don't, I don't know why we planned two, two connections there. I don't know if they didn't know exactly how to connect because of grade or what, but the, what we intend to do is to connect there between the pavilion and the pickleball court with one connect, connection, and the other sidewalk there that would run in front of that last row of units, we would connect there as well. Then we modified the pump station location slightly, just to make it easier to screen from the units, and to provide good access for the town off of both the alley and the roadway.
So, on the connections of the sidewalk you mentioned, you don't know why it's on here, or they don't know how. One of the things we like to, before we approve anything, is it engineered? Is it, we don't want to get down to processing, and there's not a, a know-how, and then we have to...
Right.
So, that's kind of, I think, what Vice Chairman Berry was saying.
Yeah.
When we got a site plan to approve, we expect it to be completed so we can approve it and have you moving forward as well, and that's at the same time.
I understand.
What about sidewalks on Parker Street? Were there any...
We have not proposed any sidewalks on Parker Street. There are not any, you know, currently on either side of Parker Street. Our units, we've, we've left a buffer between the rear of our proposed development and Parker Street, so, you know, we have, we haven't proposed one.
John, you were stating about the ordinance for parking for the units, own property? Adequate parking for the number of units on the property?
The ordinance requires so many units for, so many spaces per bedroom, per individual house. It doesn't contemplate on-street parking availability to meet that requirement.
It doesn't contemplate on-street parking, availability to meet that requirement.
Yeah, we've proposed the fifty-four parking spaces for guests, really. They're not, we're not trying to count any of them towards the required parking, parking required by zoning. We've just provided them because the, the reality is, they're going to have Christmas parties, they're going to have birthday parties, they're going to have people over, and they got to park somewhere. So this is in, this is in, you know, in-town development, people expect to be able to park on the street, and we didn't want them just parking on the street and just randomly. So we created spaces on each street in proximity to every unit, just some areas that have kind of guest overflow parking. But we're not intending to use any of that towards meeting our parking requirements for zoning. And we may add parking, I mean, if, once the, in some of these areas along, along some of the rear alleys, if we see that there's an issue, there's, there's additional space, if parking becomes an issue, then the HOA could always add that later, you know, assuming they could go through whatever process you had to do that.
Well, this body doesn't regulate HOAs or-
Yeah, I didn't know if they would have to come back to you to add eight parking spaces on an alley, you know, once this was developed. If they needed to, there's plenty of room to add additional parking. We just, once we'd put parking everywhere we could, we had like a hundred and twelve spaces, and we're like, we don't need a hundred and twelve spaces, so we just kind of dialed it back to, to, put it places where we knew that it would be the most beneficial to the owners, but would still, you know, create a good streetscape, we're not just having a big parking lot, basically.
The front entrance, do you have a debility, it looks like you have enough land to widen to have a, a left-out and a right-out?
That's the plan, yeah. Yeah, we, we would plan to have-
Stack traffic up into your neighborhood?
Correct. And that'll come when we, you know, when we fully go through the DOT permitting process, that'll require us to, to show that, all that detail, but within that right-of-way, we have room to do it.
Would y'all, would the developer be opposed to putting a sidewalk on Parker Street?
I mean, I, I would be opposed if I was building a sidewalk to nowhere, if the town was going to build a sidewalk that connected to it, and, and it was a definite plan for that, then I, you know, we wouldn't be opposed to that. But, you know, to go build a sidewalk that just ends at our property and nobody ever connects to it, then that would be very, you know, wasteful, I think. But, again, if there was a plan, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't oppose that.
John, if they didn't, if a developer didn't build a sidewalk on a major road like that, how does that play into our sidewalk fund?
Well, sure, I understand the question.
Does, could they, if, could they be made to build that sidewalk, or pay into the fund, or neither one?
In the past, the sidewalk requirement for residential development has been applicable to inferral sidewalk.
Is there any plan to connect potentially a sidewalk on Parker Street through the town?
We, we also, we're planning to, you know, sidewalks on both sides of the street, because of the townhome environment, it was kind of awkward to figure out, you know, if you were going to just put it on one, I know your ordinance, I think, only requires one, but if, kind of an intermediate change there would be, we could extend the sidewalk out to Parker and just, if there ever was a sidewalk on Parker, then it could tie in, otherwise you can just, walk in the road shoulder, and that's what they do now, probably.
Randy, what's the town's vision eventually for Parker Street?
Randy Edwards, Transportation Director. Currently, there's not a plan for sidewalks on Parker Street, but that doesn't limit there ever being a plan for sidewalks on Parker Street. In July, the council at the retreat, one of the identified items that we actually are planning to do is to actually do a comprehensive evaluation of where we have sidewalks in the town, I mean, throughout the town, and where we would need sidewalks to create that interconnectivity that everybody's looking for. So I would foresee that Parker Street with the link to South Lake, all the way around to Number One, eventually could be a sidewalk connection similar to Gibson Road or Roberts, I mean, uh, South Church Street that was just completed. So I certainly think that, that the ability to be able to put a sidewalk in through there needs to be considered as this development is approved and built.
I think that sidewalk would be in the Parker Street right-of-way, I don't think you're asking for it, okay. I wasn't sure, I didn't think you were asking for an easement there, but I, I think the other thing, going back to kind of the connections to the town's trail, we got from Randy a, a, a planned view of where that trail is, but I don't know that, that the town even knows at this point what material it is, what grade it's on, are we going to have some concrete that goes to a bridge, that goes to back to concrete? We know where it's going, and we've set aside the land for that, but I don't know that we know exactly what that, what we're tying into there. And, you know, we would of course probably be looking to have some sort of a, probably not a gate, but something that kind of delineates the fact that our amenities are, are amenities and they're not the town's amenities.
So, if I could elaborate now, here with Mr. Steelman. So the list of things that we discussed in July-
As I've mentioned in my report, identified parking specifically for each unit with a number of bedrooms by unit.
Mr. Steelman says that the parking on the street is for visitors, so that tells me that his intention is, the builder's going to meet that requirement, to have the number of, um, I think that was Mr. Sol.
Would that, would that cause a variance request of some sort, we've talked about in the past?
I don't know what they're planning on building other than what you all, so, I can't, I can't answer that.
Basically, if they build a three-bedroom, they know what they've got, you know you got to put extra parking there, if you're going to build two, you got-
The discussion back in July was about having no parking areas so that the police department could enforce that, as opposed to it being a covenant, enforcing it. I, I don't know if that's necessary, if it's just for parking. That's something for you all to evaluate. The, the issue that we discussed back in July with regard to the green space was, we had this before, is the detention pond included as in the green space calculation, or is it not? Is the walking trail, that's the town's walking trail through the property, is that included in the calculation or not? And so that was why we were asking for, you all were asking for more specifics on green space. We know the overall raw number, but we don't know where that number came from. And then I think he's addressed the, Mr. Steelman addressed the connection to the mill.
Mr. Steelman, can you address the green space?
I do know that-
Detention pond in or?
You know, that we provided two numbers, the four-point something acres of open space, which is way beyond whatever we're required to do, and then one point five, I think, was the active. I don't, I can't tell from the drawing that I'm looking at if there's a clear line that-
Nor can we, that's what we're asking.
But I, I, I do know that, you know, we've provided way, way more open space than we're obligated to.
Yeah, is the retention pond in it, I mean, what, is it, it could be a large number, but if it's not actually green space?
The walkway's not in the open space? Okay, so what, what Josh was just telling, and, and that's in the overall-
It is a plan.
So in the overall open space, we've excluded the town's walkway, but the, the drainage or detention basin is in the open space, the four-point some odd acres. Yeah, okay, so we can-
That's, that's why the question was there.
Okay.
What, what are you including?
Okay, so we'll, we can remove that from the, from the calculation and-
How large is that area? How much of the calculations?
It's less than ten thousand square feet, I mean, it's a very small, it's just a water quality pond that, uh, it's not a detention pond, the water just goes through it to trap sediment before it goes ultimately in the mill pond.
All right. Anything else?
We do have our transportation engineer in the vent, you want to ask any questions about the mitigation we've proposed? Basically, I don't know if you're going to have Randy go through the report, but we did counts on Highway Six, Parker Street, and Schwartz. Quantified all the right turns, left turns, through movements, and came back and have proposed mitigation of installing a right-hand turn lane on Parker Street. Currently, there's, there's two lanes there, there's not a separate right and left turn lane. We proposed a right-hand, adding a right-hand turn lane there, and I think Randy wanted us to modify the radius on the right-hand turn off of Highway Six onto Parker Street, which we can do, and then restriping Schwartz and Parker, so that Parker, Parker to Schwartz becomes a non-stopped movement, the stop sign moves to Schwartz. Because when you're on Parker Street, you feel like you're just going straight through, but the Schwartz people are the ones kind of feeling like you're making the turn, so we would rework that intersection, of course, subject to DOT approval. We have submitted the, the impact assessment also to DOT, and all we've gotten back from them at this point is that they concurred with our calculation or our report. We don't have any sort of permit or any sort of approval from them at this point. Of course, we would have to get that approval from them.
Randy, would you like to let us know your findings of the report?
Comment, clarify? Yes, so Mr. Steelman did submit a traffic engineering study, which, which co, uh, complemented our LTIP, which we had done and completed in 2017, which identified two intersections that are near this site, that were in need of mitigation. So his report did identify that it would make sense, from a traffic standpoint, to align Schwartz with Parker, tee that up, and make Parker to Schwartz the, the through movement, because that's where the volume of traffic is, and eliminate that odd alignment. One thing I want to make sure that is clear, is that it's a little more than just striping. Require some widening at Schwartz in order to get it teed upright, and just because it's got that little vertical, that would not get permitted. So there'll be a little bit of work there, I don't know that it's super significant, but, but it certainly would require more than striping. The other thing that we then did concur with was the need for the free right-turn lane, fully developed coming off of Parker, so that if you want to go north on South Lake, you can just come up to the stop and, and make that right turn as traffic gaps permitted. The study did talk about the fact that there is still additional needs on South Lake, but it is not the intent of this development to actually address those needs. And other than that, we, you know, concurred with the findings, and it, and it lined right up with what the LTIP had, had identified.
Okay, good. All right. Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Mr. Hanson a question, please. In reference to some of the explanations Mr. Steelman has made, what, I'm trying to figure out how to make a motion, or, I'd like to see a complete site plan with everything shown that he discussed, that we can't see for the record, so that when we do approve it, do we defer, do we deny, what would be the procedure on this?
I think you have to either approve or deny it. And then he can resubmit if necessary. You have a, unless he wants to withdraw. You have, you're required under ordinance to make a ruling within a certain amount of time, so.
What would you prefer, Ms. Steelman?
Um, with, with approval?
Other than that?
Can you come up, please?
You can withdraw and bring it back, next time we can approve it.
What I'd like to do is figure out, I guess, we can just resubmit next month, coordinate with, with the staff to be sure that we've captured whatever the, the, you know, open items are, and, you know, just come back next month with, with some of those i's dotted and t's crossed here.
I think you explained it great, and you did a great job answering our questions, but it's very hard for us to approve something that is, is not black and white, and it, well, in this case, it's pretty much all blacked out, and we can't, we can't see anything. So right, right now, it's, it's just taking in theory versus-
Right.
An exact, and then we need exact.
We'll work on just the way it's, the way it's highlighted on the plan, to make sure it's obvious the areas that are included and not included in the, each of the types of open space, and, which I think is probably the biggest hanging question, and then we'll be sure those two sidewalk connections are shown.
Access to the walk, walking trail?
Yeah, that's the, the two connections.
And parking spaces more, the overflow may be a little more clear, but I-
Okay. So you're, yes, Randy? Could we not put, show, show a trail on there, but show approximate location to be determined at a later date?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the main thing, is that, and what I was trying to say, by not knowing exactly what we're tying into, I think if, if we're just obligated to, to work with the town to finalize the locations, but that there will be two connections.
You could show a proposed location and say final route to be determined at a later date, couldn't you?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly do that.
And take your detention out of the calculation and, and identify it, so we can see as well.
And I'm looking at, I'm just, on John's drawing, it appears as though it's shaded two different colors, but on mine, it certainly does not appear that way in terms of the open space. Oh, okay. So we, we use two different colors then, but we use one color now, okay, I see, I see what's happening there.
So are you officially wanting to withdraw?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just withdraw it, and we'll come back with those three items addressed very clearly, and perhaps even have a separate sheet showing the amenity open space area, so it's abundantly clear. And I think-
So, so that Mr. Steelman was saying, that's-
We need to show, we need to, oh, the, the traffic study? Yeah, yeah, we're pretty comfortable with the, that's why I had Randy come up, we're pretty comfortable with their acceptance of, their absolute acceptance.
All right, and, and, and what we will do between now and I guess next month would be back on a regular schedule, like a third Wednesday. Yeah, okay, so we'll be back there, and then between now and then, we will flush out any feedback we can get from DOT, we can get any more clarity from them, to be sure that they're going to be supportive of what we've proposed as well on mitigation, because they could, they could easily ask- they could, they could easily ask us to do something that we're not willing to do.
As the chairman said many times before, you know, we get one shot to get one right.
Right.
With the pieces of property we have left in the town limits, especially in the downtown area.
Right.
So, we wanna make sure we try to get it right.
Yeah, I understand, no problem, and I appreciate it, and, you know, apologize that it wasn't specifically clear on, on this iteration.
One question, uh, there's, there's no question from you on parking spaces for two bedrooms, is that right?
That's right. Well, yeah, I mean, the, the plan that we've shown, if they were all two bedrooms, the parking is provided on the lot, and there's no question. When they add that third bedroom, they've gotta either do one of two things. They've either gotta widen the pavement section, or the building has to be pushed back far enough to get that third parking space.
I thought that's what you said.
Yeah.
Okay, but your setbacks, and that's gonna change the setback that you have on here.
Well, what we've shown is to accommodate the, the, um, what we've shown will accommodate a car in the garage and a car in the driveway, or, and if the solution to get the third space is to widen the pavement section, or to widen the driveway to create a third parking space on the lot, then we've accommodated that. But, the builder, I think, we've shown, uh, if, if they wanna set the building back farther, and we still meet all the rear setbacks and things, then that doesn't, I don't think, impact you, and that would be something that the building permit official would deal with, with the builder when it came time.
Kevin, one more thing. Will y'all please work with staff on looking, at least investigating the sidewalk along Parker, as we try to do interconnectivity with the town and create a walking environment?
Yeah. Yeah, and so, you have a, um, I, I guess there's a sidewalk fund, that maybe if there's a sidewalk that may be coming on Parker down the road that we could participate in?
John can work with you on how we can...
Yeah, I mean, if there was a project that was going to be a sidewalk on Parker Street, you know, we certainly would be happy to participate in that, and we just don't wanna build it, you know, because one day, maybe somebody might think about putting a sidewalk there.
John, I have a question for the, the town. Does it have any recourse on these higher density, like for parking on the street? The police, do they have any over and above, uh, neighborhood covenants? Like, if people were parking on the street, you know?
If they're parking, if they're legally...
More often than not, and it was causing issues, the police don't have...
If they're legally parking on the street, there's nothing that the town can do about it.
So, there's no...
And if it's a covenant issue, there's nothing the town can do about it.
Okay, so there's nothing, okay.
All right. All right, let's move to item number three. Thank you, Kevin, thank you guys all for coming. John, item number three, annexation election county tax map, five-three-one-one-oh-one-one-thirty-one.
The Tran family owns a parcel located at three-twenty-four Asa Rose Lane and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential two. Asa Rose Lane is currently not classified, and River Falls Lane is classified as an RL four road. Due to the surrounding conditions and the use of the property, protected residence, residential two zoning is recommended for the property, and RL four road classification is recommended for both adjacent roadways.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Right, good.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, to be unanimous. That concludes our agenda for this morning, so, Mr. Ford, good to have you. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, sir, good to be here with you, thank you.
Councilman Manis?
Thank you, Mr....
Councilperson count.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, I wanna thank y'all for what you do. We've got some tough decisions to make in the town of Lexington because of our growth. We all know it's a great place to live, and everybody else wants to live here, too. So, y'all made a wonderful first step today, and now town council needs to, to make a step to, um, to just help with our growth and, and traffic and everything else we're dealing with. So, thank you for the hard decisions that you do make. We got a lot going on in the town. Tomorrow, we're having at the Ace House Amphitheater, Will Hodge, live from Nashville. So, y'all be sure to come. Tickets are twelve dollars, and then on, um, Friday is the Trick or Treat Trail in the Virginia Hilton Park, um, starting at six-thirty, and those tickets are three dollars. And then, every year, we have a fabulous, um, fall festival put on by the police department. So, that's gonna be on Tuesday, October twenty-second, here at Town Hall. It's five dollars a person, and it is just a great night. So, Tuesday, October twenty-second, and then, uh, October thirty-first will be the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at the Blowfish Stadium, and then the parade, the Veterans Day Parade, will be on Sunday, November the third, at Main Street and South Lake Drive, and that begins at three P.M. It's always a great day to celebrate our veterans, so Sunday, November the third. And then on Friday, November the eighth, at the amphitheater is Toy Story Four, and if you haven't seen that, the amphitheater would be a great place to see it. We're gonna show that movie, uh, from, at six o'clock, and it is free, and that is Friday, November the eighth. So, come on down and enjoy the great things happening in the town of Lexington. And as always, thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Councilman Williams, you...
I just thank y'all for working, volunteering your time and working for this, the town. I think today was a great meeting, and I look forward to council taking some action.
All righty. Finally glad to have that one behind us.
Set your election, Frank. Set your choice.
Short and sweet. We normally don't have any, so...
I'm sorry, my name's Earl McLeod, I'm the executive director of the Building and Industry Association. It's on your agenda, so I assumed you would have allowed for the public to at least comment. My comments are such that I'd like to ask the Planning Commission to consider allowing the revision of the materials you're considering in advance of the meetings. We, we were not aware of exactly what all had been proposed until we arrived, arrived here this morning. Most other jurisdictions, not a reason for you to do it, provide a link to those materials in advance of a meeting, so that you can see and understand the agenda item in advance. So, I'd like to ask that you consider doing that. The other thing that I would like to encourage the Planning Commission, if you would recommend to town council that in regards to the impact fee, that there be some stakeholder meetings held to engage the public, the business community, the development community, as to what you're proposing. Typically, that is done with any impact fee ordinance, and, uh, obviously, it has not been done with this particular ordinance. The other thing I'd just ask that those council members be aware of is that in the state law, there is a section six-one-nine-ninety that deals with the proportionate share of development cost, meaning that the impact fee must be restricted to the share of the cost created by the impact of the growth. Therefore, there's gonna be some additional funding needed for those improvements that the town would have to provide in some form or fashion. So, it ain't gonna be all on the backs of the growth, it's gonna have to be proportionate share. That's all I have, but I would hope those council members here today would allow for some stakeholder meetings going forward that would involve the chamber, business community, development community. Thank you very much.
We were asked last night by Councilwoman Manis about what could council do, and one of the things we did say as the group that sits here this morning was education, and she took note of that, so...
I think we'll all benefit from a better educated, uh, process.
But, we, we've been edu, this body was educated over the last several months with this whole thing as well, so, thank you for your comments. All right, thank you for watching the Town Election and Planning Commission in action. This meeting was held at Town Hall at eight A.M., Wednesday, October sixteenth, twenty-nineteen. The recording of this meeting will be aired several times during this week on the Town of Lexington's Information Channel thirteen-oh-one, and will be viewed online at the Town of Lexington website. I'm Vice Chairman Frank Barriet, and on behalf of the Town Election and Planning Commission staff, I wish you a good day.